Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Dr. Montgomery on any of that before we move on? Wonderful. The Board will now hear public comment, subject to Board Policy 2230. The Lake Forest Boards of Education welcome public attendance and participation at all meetings. It is hoped that by utilizing these guidelines, participation will be maximized, both in terms of fairness and organization. At this point in this evening's agenda, this opportunity for public comment will be limited to comments about this meeting's agenda items only. Please hold other comments until the following opportunity for public comment later during tonight's meeting. After being recognized by the Board President, interested speakers should state their name before addressing the Board. Members of the public will be granted a maximum of three minutes each to provide comment on school district matters. Everyone has a right within reason to be heard respectfully. Members of the public will not be allowed to speak a second time until all members of the audience who wish to speak have been allowed to do so. Public comment should not be redundant and all comments should be directed to the Board. To provide accurate response, detailed questions posed to the Board during public comment will be listened to and taken under advisement. The public is always welcome to meet with school officials to receive information, discuss ideas, or express concerns. If the public has any letters or other written materials, they may be submitted to the Board Clerk for public record. Tiana will be timing public comment, public participation when necessary and will advise when the three-minute limit has been reached. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the Board this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to our Board Committee reports. Since we do not have any administrative reports this evening, I will start by saying the Board of Education Committee has, the Board Education Committee has not met since our last meeting and we are still in the midst of determining what our dates will be for this year. And we will be making one change to the membership of that committee as well. Jen, Jennifer will be joining that committee and Carl will be leaving that committee going forward. Although, as always, anyone is welcome to attend committee meetings. Alice, would you like to report on Finance and Ops?
I would, thank you. The Finance and Operations Committee met July 13th and we had a very good meeting. It included discussing initially the tentative budget for the 2023 year. Michael Sanchez and Jen provided timelines, dates, when we need to adopt the tentative budget, and enrollment trends. Enrollment trends are interesting. As of July 6th, we had 1,484 registered students with a projection of it to go up to 1,584 for the school year. Next, we talked about the overview of where our revenue comes from that goes to fund our budget. We really have four sources of revenue. We have the local source, which is property tax, and we are very heavily dependent on our local funding. Thankfully, it's been a very stable revenue stream for our community and for our school district. We also do get some from the state, general state. We also do get some from the state, general state aid or categorical aid. We have some restricted federal funding, and then a few others intergovernmental and rental income. What do we spend it on? Well, we spend it on salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, and the largest expenditure is our capital outlet. Budget highlights included needs in technology, facility and grounds improvements, and instructional spaces. The 2022-2023 budget will become the baseline for a five-year projection going forward. Facilities gave us an update on some of the bigger needs. At DPM, there's a chiller replacement. At Cherokee, as we mentioned earlier, there's an ADA modification, as well as a potential building addition. Sheridan, the early childhood playground, which includes a Spirit of 67 grant for the equipment, thank you for that, and other projects for the sum of 2023 and 2024 were listed. As Matt mentioned earlier, we also discussed safety and security. We're doing a transition from student services to facility and grounds, where Dan Mortenson will oversee it, in tandem with Jeff McQ and the principals. There's a full security assessment in progress, and the ETA is October with recommendations in four areas: deterrence, detection, delay, and response. Another topic of our meeting in July was the food service refresh. We're working in partnership with Quest to refresh the food service program, because quite a bit has changed over the last two years, especially with how to serve food. We've created a new meeting schedule that will either meet monthly or bimonthly. They will be one-hour meetings from 7:30 to 8:30. Our next meeting will be October 4th, and then after that, we are looking to have a meeting in November, December, February, April, and July. All are welcome, thank you.
Any questions for Alice? Thank you so much. Next up, Rich with the Policy Committee.
Thank you, Suzanne. The policy report. First, I digress a little. I would like to begin this report by stating that on the eve of the new school year for our district, and this morning, it has been my pleasure to serve District 67, and this will be my last year as a Board Member, as I'm not seeking reelection. That being said, I implore the community members to please volunteer to your community. We need you. As we move forward, we have come a long way with the Policy Committee, with a new superintendent and five new Board members from 67, 115, who had never served on policy before this year, or this term. I leave the Policy Committee in great hands with Matthew and Tiana, and for the next District Chair for the Policy Committee. On that note, let us delve into the exciting world of policy with our policy report. The Joint Policy Committee for 67, 115, met on August 15th, 2022, for Press Issue 109. I thank my fellow Board members Emily Bernhau and Annie Helms, as well as District 115 Sally Davidson, David Burns, for their participation in this meeting. My comments below are on our website and included in this Board Packet. For Press Issue 109, 2230, public participation at school Board meetings and petitions to the Board. The Policy Committee with the District's Attorney, Adam Langridge, indicating the first public comment will be limited to comments on action items, and the second public comment will be open to any issue. This was standard practice at the Board meetings, but is now codified in policy. The Administration and the Policy Committee consulted with the Board Attorney for guidance in adopting a maximum time limit for public comment. The Committee adopted to codify a maximum time limit of 16 minutes to comments on action items, and 16 minutes for the second public comment that is open to any issue. Other issues of press: succession of authority, that policy was unchanged, religious holidays unchanged, court duty, five-year review, solicitation by or from staff, policy unchanged, which is forbidden. Suspicion, suspension, policy unchanged for employees, teaching about religious policy unchanged where it is treated as part of an academic subject. Education of homeless children, we did a five-year review, unchanged. Homework District 67 only. We needed to codify that missed homework would be allowed for missed, to be done within a reasonable timeframe. Student-Family Privacy Acts, five-year review for the footnote inclusion of interplay with the Protection of People Rights Action, and the Children's Privacy Protection Parental Empowerment Act, and the Student Online Personal Protection Act. 7:270, administering medicine to students. We updated requiring districts to adopt or update anaphylaxis policy, addressing prevention of and response to anaphylaxis, whereas the past, the burden was on the parents. And 7:285, same response on anaphylaxis prevention. The big topic was Press Issue, a latent one, for Press Issue 108, specifically 6:60, curriculum content on the next National Sex Education Standards. As background, we started reviewing that back in February 2022. I want to thank the past administrators that were here, the current administrators that are helping Emily, Annie, and I, and the 115 Policy Committee members slug through this. And at this moment, I will like to ask Jeff to enlighten us on this, and District's policy on this.
Sure, we can take that time machine back to July 2021, when initially this came up, and the state said, "We're going to take a year to figure out what we're going to do about adopting the National Sex Ed standards. Are we going to have our own standards in Illinois and resources? We'll let you know by August 2022." In June, ISB came out and said, "We're not coming out with our own Illinois standards. We're going to adopt the National Sex Ed standards as is," and they gave a couple links as their resources. Talking to fellow school districts, we've all been scrambling, trying to figure out if we don't adopt the National Sex Ed standards, does that mean we cannot teach sex ed at all? Which was the impression many school districts had. I think ISB was feeling the heat. In August, they came out with another FAQ that said, "If you do not teach comprehensive sex ed, you may still continue to teach sex ed, as long as it's aligned to the Illinois physical development and health standards, which we do." So, in light of that turn, which came out August 10th, most of our surrounding districts, many of our surrounding districts, have elected not to adopt the National Sex Ed standards, but to continue teaching sex ed the way that we have, which aligns to the current Illinois standards, and that is what we are recommending as well.
Thank you.
And can I just clarify one point? Can you just explain briefly the difference between the National Sex Ed standards and the, what we currently have in place? Because I think it's important for everyone to understand that difference.
There are, and I think we want to do more of a crosswalk. There were very few differences, if any, for grades nine through 12. The differences in middle school aren't great. There are some differences in there, where we really saw the differences being were the elementary standards. We don't teach sex ed in elementary school, but the wondering we had is, is it all or nothing? Do we have to adopt K-8? And if we do, do we now have to start teaching in the elementary? At the middle school level, we still do want to crosswalk it. We want to look at the national standards to see if there might be some things that we would add or tweak to the current standards. They weren't great. Elementary seemed to be really where the differences were.
So, by deciding not to go with the national standards, what we're doing is saying we are going to continue as we were before in not teaching sex ed to that K through 4 population?
Correct. There, the one caveat, there are some mandates that fall outside of this, like Aaron's Law, that is a separate state mandate that all school districts must do. That does not fall within the comprehensive public health and sex ed for that.
And to follow up with the middle schoolers that we do teach sex ed to, parents can opt out if they wish.
Absolutely. So, a letter will be going home from the Deerpath Administration, explaining the health program, and parents at any time may opt their child out of that.
Thank you. That completes my policy report, I think. Did I?
I think so.
I did, thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Any further questions on that? We will be revisiting policy in the action items. So, if you have burning questions specific to a policy, we'll get there. Okay, next up, we have Liaison Reports. True North Educational Cooperative 804 is the first one, and we will not be meeting until next week. So, at our next meeting, I will have a report from True North Educational Cooperative. I can just tell you that I've been participating in orientation of the Board there, and also welcoming the staff back at their Institute Day. Next up, we have Legislative Liaison. Carl?
Thank you, Madam President. My report, we try to be pretty short tonight, but a couple topics. First one is John Noble from District 115, represented District 65, 67, and 115, and proposed resolutions to IASB. The three of them are, Resolution 5 is the first one, is the funding for school security. IASB chose to combine the language, our language that we propose, with another school districts, and essentially goes to, to advocate for the creation and funding of school safety grant program at the federal and state level. And additional considerations would be, and the district location and the financial need of those districts will be added to that proposed resolution. Also look for that. Resolution number seven was the second one, and that is the mandates, to mandate, excuse me, Mandates Review Committee. And IASB chose to do adopt this resolution, and what this essentially requires is that there'll be support at the state and national level to periodically review all the mandates, rules, and regulations affecting the local districts, with the intent of reducing the overall total number of mandates, and really put a twilight or a sunset on a lot of those sort of mandates, so that they have to be reviewed, so that we get rid of ones we don't need, and make sure that we keep the ones that we want. The last resolution was number eight, that we proposed, and that was the Special Education Funding Task Force. IASB chose to not adopt this, because they felt it was already addressed in the current position statement, which is 2.04. So, those are the three, and two of them went forward, and the third one, the IASB thought they already, already have. Other topic I want to touch on real quick is the, kind of an ongoing and very active discussion at the local, county, state, and federal levels on the additional levels of gun control, weapons ban, or gun storage. There's a lot of discussion happening, but really stay focused on what's going on in Congress in the next session. So, stay tuned, more information will be coming on that. And other than that, I hope everybody had a wonderful summer. Time to get back at it.
Any questions for Carl? Thank you so much, sir. Next up, the Spirit of 67 Foundation. Rich, back to you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Spirit of 67 Report for August 23rd. Spirit of 67 had a very busy summer. Many of the grants awarded in the spring are procured over the summer months. A huge thank you to Ruth Mascarello and Brenda Hochschild for working so diligently to get the grants into every school, so that the students and teacher have them as school as school begins tomorrow. Spirit would also like to thank the Executive APT, and all the Building APT Presidents and Building Principals for their coordination for visiting author and scientist assemblies, for fine arts presentation and SEL assemblies. We are excited at the Spirit to partner with District, with the District to bring such rich programming into all of our buildings. Through the school registration process, the Spirit has already received donations to the Spirit of 67 Foundation from over half of our district families. There are plenty of opportunities to do so during the school year, and Sheridan is going to come strong. Our special event team and donor relations teams are planning small information open houses for curriculum light to highlight school-specific grants at each building. Our signature event, the Spirit Home Tour, will take place on Thursday, September 29th. Building off last year's success, the event will be Home and Garden Tour, allowing participants to wander through some spectacular outdoor spaces, in addition to including some home interiors again. We look forward to all of the community enjoying this year's tour, and want to express our sincere appreciation to the many volunteers that have worked so incredibly hard over the summer to make it happen. That concludes my spirit report. Thank you.
Any questions for Rich? Thank you, sir. Next up, the APT Executive Board Report. Emily?
Hi, good evening. The APT Executive Board has released their upcoming meeting dates. This year, they will host eight meetings throughout the school year. The full calendar is included in this report, so I won't run through all of those dates. But please note, the meetings are held in the morning from 9:30 to 11:00. They're typically held in person here at the Administrative Center. There are two meetings that are in September and March that will be held at Croya. Please save the dates for the following fall programming. The first meeting actually is coming up in September, September 8th at 9:30 at Croya. The APT will kick off the year by hosting Dr. Montgomery and Dr. McQ and our shared staff administration. More details will be coming in the following week. Friday, September 23rd at 9:00 a.m. at Gorton Community Center. Join us for coffee and fun and casual discussion, featuring Ann Pierce and Michelle Hirschfield. There are moms way worse than you, debunking the myth of the perfect parent and the important role of building and supporting parent community. I was going to make a witty comment about how I'm not a Pinterest mom, but anyway, so I shouldn't attend this meeting. Anyway, Monday, September 26th, we will begin a partnership with the Lake Forest Library, offering early release library fund for our K through 4 students on Mondays from 2:45 to 3:15. Please stay tuned for more details on this. And Tuesday, October 18th, this will be the first of a four-part parent community safety series, hosted in partnership with 67 APT and the Lake Forest Police Department. Topics will include the role of a school resource officer, active shooter scenarios, internet crimes against children, and Stop the Bleed training. This will be an evening series, and held from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. in the Braves Gym at DPM, and certainly more information to come. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Emily. Just so many partnerships that really benefit all of us. It's a, it's a pretty amazing list. Next up, we come to our action items for this evening, and our first action item is the adoption of the FY23 tentative budget and the establishment of a budget hearing date. May I have a motion to approve the FY23 tentative budget and the establishment of a budget hearing date?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about this item? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of the Miller-Cooper Contract Renewal for Accounting Services. May I have a motion to approve the Miller-Cooper Contract Renewal for Accounting Services?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item or any questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up is the approval of the Link Contract, L-I-N-Q Contract Proposal Renewal for Financial and Human Services Software Platform. May I have a motion to approve the Link Contract Proposal Renewal for Financial and Human Services Software Platform, I think formerly known as Alio?
So moved.
May I have a second? Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up is the amended school calendar for 2022-23. May I have a motion to approve the amended school calendar for 2022-23?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
And can I just ask someone from the Administration, pick your person, to just highlight for us what change we are approving for the public's edification?
Any takers? This is me.
It's all you, Jeff.
So, the main reason for this change was, after this calendar had been approved, the state made Election Day a holiday where it's a day of no school attendance. We had already built the calendar that had school on November 8th. It's not a factor for the following year's calendar, which was approved. This is for next year. Two years from now, we will build the calendar around this, so this will be the last time we're coming back to you on this 22-23 calendar, I promise. I brought this back to the Calendar Committee. Because we had to take a day of student attendance off, we have to add that somewhere else. We know people have made plans for vacation. We did not want to tack that on to the end of the year. We had a built-in emergency day for Friday, April 28th, so the Calendar Committee recommended that we make that a day of student attendance. Now, in essence, there is now an extra snow day or emergency day tacked on, June, whatever that would be. We have never used five emergency days during a year. If we didn't do that, yeah, I just jinxed us. You're welcome.
He's new.
Eight people knocking on wood right there, I think just undid it. I think we're okay. But putting that all the way at the end of the year, as opposed to tacking on a day at the end of the year where people might already have plans, we thought was, was for the best. The other change was regarding April 10th and April 7th. So, April 7th is Good Friday, April 10th, some refer to as Easter Monday. On the calendar, we had April 10th as an Institute Day, meaning students wouldn't be attending, but staff would. We have had great difficulties staffing our buildings on Good Friday historically. This year was extremely challenging. I want to say we had over 50 staff members out at Deerpath alone. Remember, I was teaching algebra to your children. Deer Path alone. Remember, I was teaching algebra to your children, so that tells you what a catastrophe it was. So going back to the Calendar Committee, we are recommending moving April 10th as an institute day to now April 7th. So staff will still be in attendance on April 7th. We would have school on Monday, April 10th. In the eight years I've been here, we have never had the Monday after Easter off before. So I'm not sure, I wasn't part of that Calendar Committee, but this is not breaking a precedent of that. We recognize that there might be some people who already have planned to be out on that day, but in weighing, the last two years have been extremely difficult staffing the buildings, we put what's best for kids first, and that's what we're recommending.
Thank you. May I have a, is there any other, are there any questions for Jeff on that?
One question, and just asking for a friend, and I may have an eighth grader, but when is eighth grade graduation? Is that scheduled? I didn't see that on here. Or tentatively scheduled?
Tuesday, May 30th, 5 o'clock here.
Fantastic.
And the reason I know that is a parent just asked me that yesterday. But it is on the Deer Path calendar, which is linked on the website. If you go to the new district website and go to Deer Path and the calendar, it is up to speed. That's where I found it. You can let your friend know.
Thank you. She'll be very, very excited.
So may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up is the Batel for Kids Contract for Strategic Planning Services. May I have a motion to approve the Batel for Kids Contract for Strategic Planning Services? May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there, does anyone have questions or is there discussion on this? I have one, but I'll wait if someone else has one. Okay, so I noticed in the proposal, there are two options listed. Based on what you said earlier, I think I know which option we're approving, but I just want to clarify because in our paperwork, there are two. So I want it to be clear that we all know what we're voting to approve.
Option one.
Okay, can you just explain, now that I've asked for the public, just briefly, what option one is?
Yes, so option one is the strategic planning variant, which includes two face-to-face meetings and one virtual meeting. And we're doing the the option one as opposed to option two, which is full strategic planning with the 46,000, because we are in a different place than what our counterpart is in terms of strategic planning, as I foreshadowed in the superintendent's report, where we are, we have an existing plan that we are looking at modifying. And that's why I chose option one over option two.
So this is the more limited version of services from Batel, because that's the level of support that your team needs for this work?
That is correct, and 115 is utilizing option two.
Okay. Any other questions?
Matt, this is just a continuation from the work that you've done already on the portrait.
So technically, yes. So it's not, you can do them separate from each other. You can stop at just the portrait work. You could not do portrait work and just do strategic planning work. I think the the most impactful or research-based protocol, and I don't want to get over technical, would be to put both the vision work with the strategic planning so they complement each other in this building altogether. Matt, can you touch on the solicitation process for this, number of competitive bidders and the selection? Of course. So we had originally planned to stay with Batel, at least the administration had a plan to stay with Batel after we introduced the concept and picked them for the Portrait of Graduate work. When that concluded and when we were really diving into this over the summer, we took a hard look at another competitor from the Schlecti Center, and they're based out of Louisville, Kentucky. They also do strategic planning work, and they were campaigning to do leadership development for both admin teams in the district. They were looking for 15 districts across the nation to partner with. And they said, would you look at this proposal? And I said, Jeff and I will look at it, but we really need somebody to do strategic planning. I know you do that, too. They created a proposal that included both the leadership development of admin and strat planning. And what I asked Jeff to do was to lead the instructional leadership team, which is all principals and district leaders, through a selection process where they took a look at both the Schlecti proposal and the Batel for Kids proposal in great detail. And I told both Schlecti and Batel, whatever the team is gravitating towards is where I will recommend to the board. And Jeff can talk a little bit about that if you need him to. The the end story was while the admin appreciated the leadership development component and thought that maybe in the future, after the strategic plan is done, maybe one of the action items is around leadership development, they had a propensity and familiarity with Batel for Kids and were happy with the work and the process, and they gravitated towards that proposal over Schlecti.
The only thing I want to add is there was an option C, which is no consultant. So we talked about can we do this work ourselves? Overwhelmingly, the admin team was worried about bandwidth and the amount of lift that that would take, and that there was a strong propensity for going with Batel, which almost was the middle ground between Schlecti seemed like maybe a heavier lift, no consultant was all on us, and Batel, just the continuation of the work that they did, was the overwhelming choice of the admin team, which did include the 115 way, team joined us and weighed in as well. So we did have articulation with Aaron and Patrick.
Okay, thank you. And we could, I don't know if we're going to extend. So the current one expires 2025. I don't know if the end result will be kicking it out a few more years. I think in a perfect world, I would like that. And then we can evaluate five years from now, and both districts would be on the end. But I love the idea of capturing a few extra years because we're looking at this work now as opposed to just holding steady to the 2025. Can we modify and extend it so we have a new five-year strategic plan from the end of this calendar year moving forward?
Wonderful. Thanks for all that great information. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Mason? Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the approval of a memorandum of understanding for LFVA Teaching Assistant Pay. So may I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for LFVA Teaching Assistant Pay?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions on this one? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Mason? Ms. Bernal? Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up, we have an approval to waive the first reading of Press Issue 109 and the updated policies 4110 and 660. May I have a motion to waive the first reading of these policies?
Aye. Please say aye.
So moved.
May I have a second? Wonderful. Any questions on this? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Mason? Ms. Bernal? Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up, we have the approval of Press Issue 109, second reading. May I have a motion to approve Press Issue 109, second reading, which includes Policy 2230, Policy 370, Policy 570, Policy 580, Policy 5140, Policy 5240, Policy 670, Policy 6140, Policy 6290, Policy 715, Policy 7270, and Policy 7285, all of which are articulated on the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of these policies? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Mason? Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to approve the updated policies 4110 Transportation and 660 Curriculum Content? May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion on either of these policies? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Mason? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we have the approval of Director of Business Operations Enabling Agreement. May I have a motion to approve the Director of Business Operations Enabling Agreement? May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up, we have the approval of the Human Resources Report. May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second? Any questions on this? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Mason? Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up, we have the Consent Agenda. As a reminder, any item may be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of a board member. May I have a motion to approve, is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda first? Seeing none? May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items, including minutes of a regular meeting and workshop on June 21st, 2022, minutes of an executive session on June 21st, 2022, minutes of a special meeting on July 12th, 2022, minutes of an executive session on July 12th, 2022, minutes of a special meeting on August 10th, 2022, minutes of an executive session on August 10th, 2022.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Mason? Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We've had two FOIA requests. Both are complete, and this brings us to our second opportunity for public participation. I do not feel like I need to reiterate the rules for that at this time. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board?
Good evening, everybody. Ryan Martin. Nice to see you all again. Looking forward to a successful year. My boys are very excited to be back in school tomorrow. My wife even more so. Just a couple of quick things. Over the last two years, Congress passed three separate COVID funding proposals that provided $190 billion, with a B, to public and private schools. I've read a number of articles this summer that talked about how a lot of that funding still remains unspent, has been misused, and I just thought it might be constructive in some capacity if the board and/or Dr. Montgomery think it's appropriate to share with the community where we stand as it relates to that funding. Obviously, our students were impacted for two years, and so as a as a parent and and a a member of the community, I thought that that might be constructive. Ms. Levert talked about how a lot of our funding comes from property taxes, so it just would be kind of nice to know where that where those dollars were spent. And then the second thing, Dr. Montgomery, you started the Let's Talk Series last year. I found that constructive. I don't know what feedback you've received from the the community regarding that. I'd love to see that continue. I felt that it was a a nice forum for community members to come together and talk outside of these meetings, which I seem to be the only one that comes to. So if there's interest, I think that that would be a great thing to continue. So, thank you. Great to see you all and hope you have a great year.
Thanks for joining us. Did you want to respond to any of that? No?
The only thing I would add is that we are planning on doing the Let's Talk Series. We have not picked topics as of yet, but it is on the agenda to have, or on the docket to get those built out. If you have topics of interest or things that we would be interested or that you would be interested in us doing, we're all ears. And then as we as we're doing the circulation around the APT circuit, we'll be asking the same question. Are there things that they want us to talk about during those series?
Thank you. Wonderful. Now we come to our announcements. The first one is that Wednesday, August 24th, as we've said, is the first day of student attendance for our first through fourth grade kiddos. Monday, September 5th is Labor Day, so there is no school for students or staff. And Wednesday, September 28th, is the next Board of Education meeting at 7:00 p.m. here in West Campus. Please note that is a Wednesday. We had to move that for, to accommodate some travel schedules. And that concludes our meeting. So may I have a motion to adjourn the City of Lake Forest School District 67 Board Meeting for August 23rd, 2022?
Before we go, I'd like to congratulate Suzanne Sands for leading us in this president, as president, in this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second? Oh, wait, wait, what?
I retract.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. May I have a voice vote? All in plate, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.